Call this meeting of the Wausau County Council of Lords, please stand with the indication and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Our flag is up here on this wall here, we will face it tonight. Our indications would be given by Mr. Regis, as part of the Orange Hill Baptist Church, and a former member of this council, and certainly one of the leading citizens of our community, Mr. Justice, if you would lead us.
I have to follow again, Lord, we're thankful this time that we can be here. Thank you for the blessings of life that you give us each and every day, Lord. We look to you for those blessings. We're thankful for your word that you prepare for us, Lord, as you help us guide us in the direction we need to go. And just all we do is thank you and praise you, and lift you up, and we know that your mercy and your grace and goodness is for us each and every day of our life. We're thankful, though, you are who you say you are, Lord, nothing but that of the truth, the God of I am, that I am. Praise and take us from where we are, Lord, and lean us forward each and every day, as we look to you, that leadership and guidance. And pray that leadership, this committee, Lord, tonight, that's the one that's sitting on board, Lord, for each and every one of the members, Lord, with his faith, they'll have the wisdom and understanding to make the decisions that you would have them make, and they will love us more than they have integrity, they need to have to feel about their duties and that of serving others in this community. And thank you for the time we can come and lift you up, Lord, especially, Lord, for the blessings in the way you do, and for the blessing of this life and yourself, Lord. And we pray that you can tell us in your word, Lord, if we will not in our self, seek you and seek your guidance, Lord, and pray for our land, which will truly hear us from heaven, then we will be done. And we practice our prayer tonight, Lord, and we will do that. Thank you for the freedoms that we still have. Thank you for the time and opportunity we could come and stand before you, and lift you up, praise and honor. Just be with those tonight, Lord, in a special way, Lord, and give them that wisdom to make the right decisions. Again, we thank you, we love you, and we praise you. And again, thank you for this opportunity to come and share. And most of all, we thank you, Lord, for Jesus Christ, who came out on that cross, for the sins of this world, Lord, who through him might have life, and only through him we have that life. No, Lord, you must believe and believe in him, and he shed blood. Be with us now and be with those of them whose decision made this night about our community, that's what we pray. Amen.
Would you lead us in the page?
I will.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. Please stay with us if you will. Sometimes our pastors or those that lead us need to leave, but we always welcome you to stay. Thank you. Does everyone have their microphone on and turned on? Okay. You have had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there any additions or additions to the agenda that is presented, any corrections?
We need to pull-
If you recall. Go ahead.
I need to pull up the bond resolution. It's not ready yet.
Okay, that's our item eight, the perk. Move the bond resolution. You remember that we're voting on two sets of minutes tonight, so any corrections that we had for those that were not presented last week, or last meeting, if you've had a chance to read them and have corrections, now's the time to mention those. Here, none of the chair would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Does that also include approving the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda and adopt the agenda as presented. Any, that is our second to the motion?
Our second.
Any discussion on the motion? How do you move it, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
In her place, she is. Okay. Ms. McDonald, do you need a moment? I know you just come in, you need a moment to collect, or?
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, after the day. Are you still there?
Mr. Hawkins was hoping you'd be five minutes late, because we're going to give him your spot.
Oh, no, I know, you all, you're on this round. So, today evening, I'm here with the chairman and the council members and staff and guests. And tonight, I'm here for a land use application, which is our basic day-to-day approval for development, and that would be if you've got a developable property, your land use is verified, you meet setbacks, and you're good to go. And so, what the Wausau Assembly of God has asked, that because of the loss of parking at the front of the building along 77, because of the state road expansion, they're going to have to relocate their parking. So, to do that, they've submitted a, their applicants, they have some representation, they've submitted an application to just revise the parking, and they're going to have to reconfigure the parking also. So, they're going to move the canopy, covered parking area, and they're going to have to make some adjustments to make that happen. So, they've asked for variances to, for relief from our code, which is allowable. We look at those by a case-by-case basis. And so, we looked at the application, and so there are three canopy areas that are being proposed on a 1.5 acre site. And square footage-wise, I think total, if there's one canopy of 1,000 square feet, one less than 1,000, one 2,000 square feet. So, basically, we're relocating the canopies that are there. Nothing, the access and traffic, and that is not going to change. They still are going to have the same access points under their property. Landscaping, they're going to have requirements there. In fact, they're going to have to have relief from that because of the expansion of the state road. And I foresee us having more of these variance requests for other areas and other locations as the road is expanded. Our proposed code does have some relief in there for situations like this, so we'll be able to have some language to guide us there, so the applicants won't have to continue to apply over and over again. Commissioner Bush actually had some language that was provided to him from Panama City, and it's pretty solid, it's pretty good language. So, it's a hardship to lose the property, and I understand, and to have to rebuild, and so we don't want to make it more burdensome than it already is. So, to relocate the parking, the various requests were to, this is the request, request for front setback reduction, a setback from the canopy structures from State Road 77, a zero setback from the canopy structure on First Avenue, reduction of vegetative buffer on Highway 77, and allowing, continuing to allow the existing grass parking to remain, and to allow access from the parking spaces along First Avenue, and some relief for interior landscaping. So, in reviewing the variances and the applicant's justification and information, we felt that these variances met the criteria in the code for variance requirements. Although, we didn't grant them the variance from the front setback from the church, because the church building isn't moving, there's no construction on the building, and so there was no need to grant a setback there. But as far as for the canopy structures and landscaping, we're, those are the requirements of the code for variance requests. And so, staff recommends approval. I'll try to answer any questions, this is a complicated one.
See, it looks like the case of where the property on its entire length, the law will violate it.
Yes, fortunately. And then we have our code, and they're going to treat the church like a new development, but it's not the case, because they're not going to make any changes to the structure of the actual sanctuary or building. So, but they still have to have variances to replace the structures.
For purposes of orientation, we want to take, we want to take three quarters spaces, this closest to Highway 77, and move it to the further ends of the existing canopies and extend it that way. That's basically what is going to happen.
Yes, sir.
And then the eighth foot is going to be a variance from 77.
Yes, such as the reduction.
Do we all, do we all understand the land development code, the setback from property lines and highway or road rights away and things like that?
Right.
The county, but McDonald introduced herself, and she's been before, I think all of you have been on the board now. She's come at least once since you've been here. The county does the planning for, and interlocute agreement for, for the cities of Vernon, Wausau, Kirneville, and Pete Road, but those things that's inside the city, we have to vote on as well as the planning commission has to review. Anybody have a question for Ms. McDonald?
Real quick, the front setback from 77 in code is required, it requires 50 feet. So, that is quite a distance. And so, to reduce that to eight in that one area for the structure, it's quite a reduction, but it's not affecting the traffic flow, the access points, and they're not increasing the parking significantly. It's just to-
I mean, sidewalks here will be inside the right-of-way anyway, so this setback is going to be from the right-of-way, not from the edge of the pavement, it's going to be from a sidewalk or whatever the right-of-way hit is. Are there going to be any other additions on the other side, any other development on the property besides moving three quarters spaces from the west to the east?
This is the initial request. Now, in the future, there may be additional requests. If the church decides to do a significant change at the parking lot, we may have to look at a development application that you all will review and approve. I can't think of anything. Now, if any significant expansions or additions of the church occurs, then we would, you know, we'd also look at that as a development review, so. But right now, for their immediate needs, I think this will address their immediate needs.
I must confess, I had read this for last month, and I may have forgotten. What will this do about water shed? What will this do about, if you're going to move water closer to the people on the other side of Jefferson, or the other side of Jackson, you're going to go to work, you're going to move that water shed closer to them. I don't know that it will create any more, if it can get it quicker enough about dispersing or anything.
I don't, as far as the impacts, we would say these were de minimis, they're just minimal impacts. And the offset of the pavement and retaining that grass parking is not going to increase their stormwater.
If you change three to three, you won't have the same amount of improvement?
Right. They're not adding significantly to the application, and so they're meeting the state requirements for square footage, they're just under the square footage requirements for required, that you'd be required to submit for a permit, and so we didn't feel that their impacts were significant. Or they would have had to go through the development review process, and it's an existing development. We would look at maybe a stormwater review if there were significant improvements to the church.
Over the years, we and the church both had water problems from that street, although we have out to Pioneer. We've got an underground drainage there, part of the way, but I don't know that it stays. That's out near Pioneer, I believe that may be a county, well, that was a secondary state roof, I don't know how that's poisoned there, but, did everybody, anybody have a question for Ms. McDonald? And I believe you're with Ms. McDonald.
Yes, sir, I do need to add, I may can answer a couple of those questions.
Anybody?
I didn't get a chance to even meet Ms. McDonald.
Okay, thanks for the record, introduce yourself.
My name is Tracy Germinigan with JV Engineering. My colleague is the one that's really taking the lead on this, because I'm out of town, so I'm filling in for him. But to answer your question directly, and to clarify, the parking's not all getting moved to the back, some of it's just being reconfigured in the front of the sanctuary but for the back. So, I don't think it'll have any additional stormwater issues for the building on the backside, but it is basically just a swap for swap from whatever they've been impacted by FDOT, just to keep them in the same operating condition that they are now. No additions to the sanctuary, no increase in parking traffic or any of that that we're anticipating down the road. At this point, we don't know that they're planning to do anything. If they do, then it would go through the planning department that would develop it on the process and meet whatever stormwater requirements were required at that time. So, at this stage, it really is just taking the impacts from the growth of our highway system and just rearranging a little bit. Stay very similar to the way it is now as far as all the access points.
Any members of the council have a question or comment? Question, clear to the council. Question, clear to the council on the variance to allow, it's on the last page of your, there's three quarters of it. It's a part of the narrative. The staff recommends approval, according to proposed variance requests, meets the criteria of section eight, dot, 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 of the development code, and it's three things. Eight foot setback from the three proposed canopy structures of Highway 77, zero setback for the one proposed structure on First Avenue, zero setback upon that to be around the property line?
Yes.
Okay. Is it going to be to the existing property line that we have already given 10 foot to the church on that side? Now, is that going to be existing property line or be inside the 10 foot that we've already abandoned?
It should be from their new property line from-
About the same year.
So, it's not the right-of-way.
Where'd you go?
From their property line.
Yeah, this would be, this would be on, I think it's First Avenue on this side, where the canopies are already, that are basically right on the right-of-way line. So, the DOT taking, takes that portion back, we're going to have those canopies on First Avenue or First Street. That would be the zero-foot setback that we're looking for variance there.
Are there going to be larger canopies than what they are now?
No, sir.
That's what I'm saying, we just abandoned 10 feet on this end of the canopy, so if they're not going to come in a foot of this way, they shouldn't, they should have setback space. Did we not do that about a year ago?
Yeah, I did, didn't hear. But I think they were already in our right-of-way, weren't they, when they-
They were up on it, yeah.
Yeah.
But they weren't 10 feet up on it.
Yes, sir, I don't know if you have it in your packet, there's a sheer plan that was generated for the after condition of the DOT, so that, those canopies that are on the south side, you can see the dashed right-of-way line that's there now, those canopies are currently sitting there, very near the right-of-way line as it is, and more so towards the back, they're a little bit skewed from the right-of-way. So, we wouldn't be taking another 10 feet, we're just basically leaving their alignment where it's at. The three that gets impacted on the 77 side would be moved back. If that makes it clear or my-
It does, and I'm not a puppy for asking, do, it's the logical plan for them to do, and just get concerned for help us, sir, just get concerned if they're right on our right-of-way and, I mean, it's not a high traffic, or it's not a high volume or a high-speed traffic corridor, but if we're touching the right-of-way with them, are we increasing abilities for the town? I don't- What is the opinion of the council?
My microphone, you were exempt.
We have a motion that we approve of the variance, is our second to the motion. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? How do you view this, Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Yes, chair, who she is. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. As I said, if you have another one, move on.
Yeah, the comprehensive plan, are you here for the comprehensive plan and land development tonight, or are we going to pull that for a later date?
Yeah, I can give you a real quick update. Yeah, so we're moving forward with the comp plan amendment, the comp with the debate.
I'm going to talk, guys, I've got to work for the conference. It's not easy on the Wausau.
They're gracious, they're good to me. So, a quick update, so last time we spoke about the comp plan, it was informal, and we talked about just overall, just general topics, and we were open to any input that you all had, if there was anything that you wanted to see added to our comprehensive plan or land development code that would help, or that would help you begin with your vision of the future and what you're looking at. And so, we've been moving forward with that process, and we've had, we've been getting, actually, we've got some more comments back, we've got comments back from the state, so it's looking good, so it's looking really good. The planning commission acts as your recommending body, and they're going to be approving that November 1st, so the comp plan. And then the land development code, they're going to be approving, should be approving that too in December? The Board of County Commissioners has two hearings to adopt the updated plan, and that is November 16th and December 16th. So, it's been a long process, but it's almost over, it's almost done. So, if you have any input, we're still taking input, we've got a few days, if there's anything that you want to share. There's still time, the board, you know, the Board of County Commissioners adopts in December, so there's still time to work with the drafts as they are. The state reviewers didn't make any significant changes or require any significant changes, and the other agencies that have weighed in, I don't foresee them doing that either.
I can ask this under another heading, another meeting if you prefer, but does the land development code allow you to set distances from churches, schools, residents, et cetera, daycares for alcohol sale and consumption?
Yes.
And I know that the county a few years ago shortened that distance.
Took the state standards.
Took the state standard, what, it took a mile years ago, and then it got to be a half mile, whatever. I'm concerned, we're a mile and quarter long and three quarters of a mile wide, there's hardly any place that that could happen with as many churches as we have. But we have a place in the counties, say it's 600 feet or whatever the state standard is, we've got a place in the county that has a public wheel sometime on High Yen, where they set 300 feet, and it's by a way of travel, they set 300 feet off the road, and their neighbor sits 300 or 400 feet off of the road, but they're only 100 feet apart, or something like that. The natural way of travel will take you out 300 feet, over 50 feet or whatever to the next driveway, and end 300 feet or 200 feet, or whatever it is, and you have made the natural way of travel. But from building to building, you're not separated that alcohol sale and consumption.
They still have to meet every other guideline that's put before the county ordinance, the minimum seating capacity, full-time kitchen, anytime you're in alcohol services, 50% of retail sales from some other form of alcohol. The ordinance is written very, very strict, and very, very the kind of route that you're looking for in a county in Washington. So, there it is.
I understand that, but I can meet every one of those things, it's going to be 100 feet from your house, or 50 feet from your house.
Well, yeah, you very well could, but you also have got to be exalted merchant, with a commercial-type building, so you really have to go through a lot of hoops before you get to that, with spots on it, and so on and so forth, and we had a great planning commission that's going to definitely look into that and make sure that. There is a lot of stuff that goes into before you sell the first merchandise.
I understand, and that's nothing that I can ask in under another heading.
Yes.
When I sit here, I'm concerned about the town of Wausau.
No doubt. In order for Wausau to get one, they'd have to hover 500 feet underground, because there's that many churches along the corridor of Wausau. And I counted one day, and I think in the city of Vernon, if I'm not mistaken, there's 13 churches inside the city of Wausau.
Wow.
So, I say the same, I say tongue-in-cheek all the time about Vernon, for an establishment committee, it would have to be area. So, but there is multi, there's multi-faceted ordinance that the county's put into place to protect the values of Washington County, far more strict than any state statute requires, because of the implementation of the sales of the restaurant-type atmosphere.
Mr. Carter, do we need an ordinance to address Wausau's separate from the county's ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Because-
What we're-
A former attorney, a former lifetime, let an ordinance, I don't know how they've become the court, or the statute changes and the ordinance didn't comply, or didn't-
Yes, sir.
And-
State preemptive.
Okay. That's when we got Tom Thum. My first, my first days on this council, we didn't have alcohol in Washington County, had not had for probably 50 years.
Yes, sir.
And because the ordinance went out of, and-
I would be more than happy to send our ordinance, Mr. Carter, I bet Mr. Carter was part of the reviewing of our ordinance after the fact, Mr. Devon, myself, and the team drafted the ordinance and presented it to the commission. I know Mr. Carter during the time with Fuqua and Eldon, he also reviewed the ordinance, but I would be more than happy to send the ordinance to you again, if you're about to review it.
I get it from Matt, too.
Yeah, it's pretty airtight ordinance, and it's, it's scrutinized more than it's possible, trust me.
No, sir. You've answered the question.
And, Mr. again, the land development code that's being changed, it doesn't have the alcohol requirements. I mean, it would, you'll have the land uses in there, and what uses would be allowed in land use, but our code of ordinances is where the alcohol requirements live, so we wouldn't be updating that in this draft unless you wanted to, you know, submit changes to the code ordinance.
If Mr. Hawkins says it's airtight, then?
Well, I will send it to your attorney for his review. My airtight and his airtight are the two things, but we have scrutinized ordinance multiple times. I'm sure you've read the ordinance, and I presented it to you, and we've read it together, even before the ordinance was passed, I'm pretty confident, that's it. We, this wasn't something that was, took light of this ordinance, wasn't it? This ordinance was probably a six-month task to make sure that the ordinance had the firm agenda to protect the integrity of Washington County, but also stimulate economic growth in Washington County, including this outside of the interstate, wherever the growth may come, Ebro, wherever they come in the future. So, I feel good about it. I feel very confident about the ordinance, and I'm proud of the ordinance.
Here's the thing about it, the ordinance is in place whether the referendum passes or not.
No doubt. I cannot control the referendum, whether it passes or not, but I can control the ordinance.
I would be less than honest with you if I didn't tell you the fact that we're just going through the referendum process now, is what trickles my mind, is why we've looked at this thing for months, for over a year, and that being a part of the land code and all that, it's never, of course, recent events has made me think.
You wouldn't be doing your job if you didn't consider it this time, thank you enough.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. McDonald?
No, just let me know if you have any questions or comments on the plan.
Okay. Do we need to- Do we need to, as a part of one of our workshops, we need to talk about anything that we the uh the comp thing we're talking about now is one of these things like for future land development for industry, for housing, for suffusions and when you're three quarters of a mile wide and mile and quarter long, there's not a loss of that that can go on. We may even need to be thinking somehow or another about annex and if anybody would like to like to join our town or something like that. If you have any questions, just give them to Margaret or directly to Donald. Donald, they can come directly to you, right?
Sure.
All right, give them to Ms. Margaret. She'll get them to Donald, okay? Thank you for coming. Thank you for your service to the county. Okay, Mr. Thorpe, will it be all right if we let uh Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Go. Uh he's been in a meeting all day and.
If you're close, guys, go ahead. I I'm not gonna be here. I'm not gonna be here. I'm not gonna go.
Okay, all right. Come on, Mr. Thorpe. Your deck's on the your deck's on the agenda.
I'm happy.
We definitely have your deck. You don't find us. I I'm looking forward to hearing what you have to say. That's why I'm sticking around.
Thank you.
That's why I said, I need you to talk.
Oh, God. You asked for money. I I want to go first.
I think y'all got a coffee this evening.
We do.
As you've noticed, uh the Velt Club, along with Recreation Club, the most of the Velt Club got several events coming up. And if you didn't look down, one of them is Trump's free fall festival. Uh it's freed everybody. It's a five, seven. We have hot dog, hot dogs and drinks and probably some hot chocolate and coffee. We got all these games, which was built by Sherrod. It's done to excellent job. We also have some entertainment, hopefully. They get a little gossip scene going on at the same time. Then we got, they said in a meeting that they won't have a a fan and a Christmas pack. So we planned that and due to possible problems being in our renovations and everything, we scheduled it to happen in Waukesha. Then we talked down to the Free Apple Movie, which for kids on November twenty. And that's gonna be at six.
Whenever dark.
Whenever dark gets here. It will be at the Boston Palace. And we'll have probably drinks and snacks there for free. And one of the things y'all been asking for, Roger Dale has, is to decorate your Christmas season. Well, Sherrod talks to the rest and talks to the rest. So here's what we have. We plan on having, with y'all's permission, a light and square of the holiday resort. We'll have uh booths during the day, some different people crafts, some entertainment, baths and a little bit of Christmas music going on. And maybe a little gospel music going on. But that'll happen all day long on November twenty seventh. We pick the twenty seventh, cause there's several others done scheduled. So we didn't want to interfere with nobody else's. We did twenty seventh. About on weekend, we could do it. And in the plans, we plan on putting a tree in and a bunch of deck presses. All this is gonna cost some money. And I'm gonna come to you the last minute. We're gonna make it happen somehow. We will need electrician. If all this do.
I've got electrician coming to uh because we're gonna have to light the monument up anyway, the birthday lights after dark.
Yeah.
So we've got electrician coming to go put us some outlets out there.
Well, the tree this year may be a, may be a big tree, may not be a big tree. We've looked, she's looked into it. They get expensive. At this late in the, we've made one building. There will be something happening. And uh then the Carter Club decided that they want to add to it. So they want to have a most festive home award, which we've awarded to everybody or somebody on the Wausau water system. Not this year, just this limit. Anybody that's Wausau water will get a chance to get this and decorate the yard. And we picked two people to be judges that don't live in Wausau. They live outside the outskirts. And for the reward, there'll be a basket, which will be a Christmas dinner. Have a turkey, a lamb, all the fishes. And that's what we've ordered to them. And then on November eleventh, we'll have the veteran's day celebration at ten o'clock. Get Blue Star Mark. Ten o'clock. Remember that, Roger Dale.
I'm home that week, y'all.
But the Carter Club expressed interest about the monument being out there in the middle of nowhere. So they're asking permission to move it closer to the Boston Monument. And it may, to keep it in line where it's gotta be, they found it between the two trees there. Maybe the Halton Monument, nowhere that side won't leave nowhere, but leave closer to it. So do we have permission to move the monument?
The Blue Star?
The Blue Star Mark.
Yeah. Okay, it's not set in concrete or anything. It's just they're temporary because we had to place it for the.
We would like to get it moved, we're moving it, we're trying to move it ourselves before the November eleventh.
I I think it's a good idea to move it and and I would suggest either when you move it, it's sitting this way, hallway now.
It was.
I turn it this way so the folks can see it coming from both directions.
We're looking into that and also the paint's coming off one side of it. And they've hired a guy that just voted on the come redo sign. We can send it off for eight hundred dollars plus to get it refurbished or for seven hundred fifty dollars plus motel room, we get done on site. But the bill we're gonna sometime next year if we can get it to fifteen or done.
Do you want to move that before you have these activities or wait until the movement comes through?
Before veterans come and say.
Yeah.
Before they left, before November the eleventh. I think everything we've got, though, is already beyond where the right way is gonna be, so. Anybody have a question on uh on on any of the things at at the the planning events of uh at the Development Club or the Garden Club? And okay, let's let's do it by motion. Right here, motion. We approve the list that's been handed to us. And Mr. Thorpe, communicate with Garden Club and uh give our approval. Is there a motion? If we approve this list?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. We approve the list that's been handed to us. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Got a motion and second in discussion on the motion. How you doing, Ms. Wilson? Yes. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Carter? Yes, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Cheers, how she is. Thank you for coming.
How about.
What what?
You know, we want to get the town decorated, looking better. Last year, Sherrod did Kennedy canes and.
They were pretty. They were. They were very pretty.
Well, unfortunately, price fly with one of this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's back, though, isn't it?
It's right now.
Yeah, they ain't about giving it away now, though.
But I'm sure there'll be something done, you know, besides just the the festivities.
Yeah.
If y'all do have any money to put for, behind, if not, we'll make it happen somehow.
What would we have, then?
We got some in our, you know, we did the eight, the time, you know, with the flowers and so we got money in that.
Okay, same thing like we have to do uh for stretch weight fishing, thing like that.
Something else I would like.
Let's have a figure. It's easier for us to talk about many if we know what we're talking about. What what are you asking?
If then, if you wanna.
You don't know how much it's gonna cost, so I know you can't tell us, but.
Sherrod, guess some rough figures or.
She said that more than ten thousand.
Better than Washington County.
That's why I have I've been trained.
I don't believe, yeah, uh. I would have been in that budget, finding that line out of you, how much we got in there?
I think we got probably a couple of three thousand, I guess, with three flowers and the birthday.
If we is anybody have a suggestion? If I suggested that we save five hundred dollars up to us, something from start with, I don't know how far that'd go. I don't know how much we're going to do. I know the clubs are gonna put in some and some of us will privately in the vision put in some, I'm sure. But uh is that a figure to start with or do you think that's okay? Okay, let's have a motion on that, then, somebody.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion that we can give up the five hundred dollars for uh these these items, the Christmas uh things in particular. Any, a second?
Sounds like it.
Motion and second in discussion on the motion. How you doing, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Cheers, how she is.
Hey, uh another thing to notice.
You do have a paper now.
I don't. That's the list of the fence we got. Well, another thing we can look into, you know, the dotted card signs put down there where it's at. When the road gets done, right now, you don't even notice it. So we're all time, us, the Recreation Club and the Fire Department, for seeking banners and banner cover that are not cheap and easy to come up with. So we've been looking into signs, related signs. If you all go electronic, we took fifteen, twenty thousand or up. And they don't work that good. Uh I think they've seen some. You find all the LED lights like the kind of church where you put the letters on, it got covered, locked down, everything. They're like five, six thousand up. And I'd like for the Velt Club to see, Recreation Club, Fire Department and Velt Club work together and purchase some kind of sign. It needs to go out here by Miss Beth's house or from that side.
To to do what? Identify a sign, a sign?
A sign, identify stuff coming in.
Get the public sign.
Say you had a town council meeting, you want everybody to come, you can put it up there.
So you've got a COVID testing facility here.
Sir.
So you've got a COVID testing facility in Wausau.
Yeah, you're you're talking about get the public information sign.
Everybody.
Isn't it?
The shame why I said that is if you had a COVID testing facility one day that you needed to utilize the fire department for, your heart could act and pay for that sign.
Yeah.
But that's something where everybody could gather and work on.
I I think that's a great idea. Is somebody gathering information now or you just you just kind of floating that out?
I should.
It'd be after the, if it's after the, if it's after the road is done, that's three or four years away.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
We'd like to go in. You have one, you did it.
Okay.
Could I speak? Can I speak?
Sure.
Um we have a quote right now for fifty-seven hundred dollars on the link, right around fifty-seven hundred dollars. It's a six foot tall. I think it's three or four foot wide. Um steel structure. The top is lighted with LED lights and so it'd be very inexpensive to run. Um it comes with all the letters. Um it locks and it would just need, we would need some power and and know where we could put it. Um that's the quote that we have at this point. I only have one quote so far.
As a aside, would you share that quote?
I'm not.
Our contractors, we're we're all looking back in our church for hurricane damages and we're looking for signs and we're having, we're having local, local problems of of being identified, look, we're having problems with signs with our insurance.
And that included shipping?
Okay.
That don't include putting it up.
Okay, so what are you asking for now for us on that? You're making us aware of it, but what are you asking us to do?
Uh basically, just be thinking about it, maybe decide if I want to go together. Uh I don't know. I'd see if y'all would be part of it. You'd have to have several quotes. But uh no one would be able to supply electrician for it. And that place to it. And whether we get the, y'all know more about the Fire Department budget, Recreation Club budget. I know Velt Club budget and we will donate if it's a fee of half or whatever. But we'd have to afford to get voted off.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, while you go away and get your vote, can we make this something to come back to next month and make a vote on it?
So again, the protection out is.
This is, while we've got the fire people here and do it, we'll we'll discuss. We've got a workshop and a meeting a little bit on Tuesday night. We'll discuss that then.
All right.
And before the next month, we'll we'll, I'm speaking for us. Is that okay? We'll have something, uh a figure or something before you make the.
Okay.
I I do think we ought to have some input on where you where you place it. We're gonna presume to be pretty suggestive from the Fire Department, but.
It would be unfair.
Yeah, well, I don't think we wanted to act here beside this house because when you come, if you put across the road, we'll be seeing, you you won't have traffic. It will come this way. You will have a line of sight problem. I think we don't need to be on that way because you need to look this way, but you you don't have to, you don't have to look that way. You've got across the street and get hit over there, but this way, if you give up behind that side, you've got a line of sight, could have a line of sight problem.
And I'm not sure in the county, you know, uh for me, we're Bay County. We used to do signs that work, but is there a sign ordinance?
There is, yeah.
So we'd have to go by that, too.
Yeah. The legislative tier probably do, uh she and the COVID enforcement people would would have to permit that. So there are some, there are some setback requirements and some things like that.
But if we don't get started, never.
That's right. I think it's a great idea. It's a great idea.
So we're good to go and having our all the festivals.
Well, you have no motion to move it towards that, is it?
No, we just had to plan it though, for the Garden Club to get their money in. But point, yeah, if we move it to where the sidewalk is, to nowhere, you know.
Well, we're gonna move toward the sidewalk. It's still gonna be probably about the same distance the road did now.
Okay.
Well, I sure hope when we have nothing else to work on, that we'll put two more prongs on that thing out of that sidewalk after that. I don't know how we ever let that happen.
All right, I appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know emotionally, but I think.
Everybody's invited to come join the Garden Club or the Development Club.
Thank you.
We're always looking for members, both of them.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, sir. This is a surprise. I'm not really sure. It's never good when your name's on agenda, nothing's behind it, so.
Oh, we're glad that you came tonight. Uh.
And Mr. Massa couldn't make it. He's at the Burner Fire Department working out Greenhead Fire Department issues. He he has to apologize for his absence.
Yeah. Early early on, you hardly ever missed a meeting and then you found out that, hey, they're going to this and I remember that.
I know.
We've missed you.
Well, I I I miss y'all, but it seems like uh the meetings is not stopping. They just double up in size.
Yeah.
We we had to change the schedule around a little bit. Like I said, we double booked ourselves tonight. We had a, we both were supposed to be in the Greenhead Fire Department meeting, not discussing the the placement and the the finishing of the Greenhead Fire Department. So one of us come there and one of us, one of us came here, so we we adapted over time, so. But it's not, it's not out of intent, I don't, it was just out of scheduling purpose, I think, comes nears much. I'm always a phone call away.
All right. I won't make any bad jokes about with that to see you, no matter what you like to or say. We uh we are glad that you're here. Uh and we asked, uh a couple of meetings ago, we asked if we could do this because there'd been some things we had presented to the county off and on and then the responses seem not to come back to us.
Okay.
And uh we we just thought that with you and Mr. Massa here, we could maybe dig a little deeper into it and see if we're asking for things that you can't do or aren't willing to do.
I'm not sure.
Things, okay, we're gonna share. We're gonna tell you what.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh and 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 we do appreciate that you that you came. Uh as I recall, I have four things here and any of you may have anything else. This is what, this is what we're talking about.
We got four things. Any of you get a piece of?
I made that, I made that tongue off that one.
You can watch the tape, Trey.
Do I now?
You can watch the tape.
That's on Google, so if I'm watching that. Yes, sir.
Okay, uh does any, these are what I wrote down from our meeting. So this, some of this already has your stuff in it, but if you have anything other, uh then we'll do that. If any of you wants to start first and you could help or not check it off here, if not, I'll show on the list and then if we get through and I have it covered, it's yours to spit out and do it.
I like to use the, you start on the.
Start here. Those are the things we're talking about, okay? Okay, one of the things we had talked about is the cares menu. Can you, can you tell us what's going on with that?
When you put a plan together to the state, submitted to the state on care that money, we utilized one point five million of it for brought in, which we discussed with the city of Wausau, where I think we had a local agreement to utilize your talent in Wausau. Did y'all submit a plan to the county for care that funds?
We sat down with Wheeler.
Okay.
And they took our list.
Do you remember what the list is?
Ah, no, but I can look it back up.
That's a problem, I get Wheeler tomorrow.
We can provide it.
Do you remember any of the particulars, what it may been?
One of them was, something was like remote work from home, you know, computers for that, you know, temperature stations, stuff like that, you know, that.
Okay, if you'll give me the list, I'm not aware of the list. We have contractors in place, and we have, Miss Abel would be the conduit channel there for that, and Mr. Massey. And I'll definitely check on that, have them reach out to y'all tomorrow, or tomorrow, you're not here tomorrow, Mr..
If you do it in the next couple of weeks, that'd be.
No, they'll reach out to you next week.
We're not here to press you.
I saw an address, and I would find that.
Now, is this the one that, that Mr. Parker told us that? Is it, this is not one, he said we want on the list and stuff like that, is that's going to be the?
There you go.
Thank you.
I know that the generator for the town hall, it was approved.
That was on our list for, yeah.
We, that's been submitted and approved, we're working through that now. So, you'll probably see some engineers out over the next couple of weeks, working with y'all, getting the structural sites. That's a huge, that's a huge win.
Hey, it's a big one.
Yeah, so that makes.
That was on our list.
Okay, so generators, I can't answer that tonight, I approved that today and it will be. Now, the Harkla funds are coming directly to Wausau.
That, yeah.
And that should be a pretty substantial amount.
Right, yes.
And y'all was discussing a sign a while ago, and I alluded to the care that, or to Harkla funds. That is a conduit to pay for the sign because you utilize that for advertising for COVID shelters, or COVID vaccination points, or COVID testing areas, and so on and so forth. So, there is an avenue there that you make and look at utilizing funds to pay for your sign. We are working on two sites through care that, one for EOC and one for the annex, for that simple reason, being able to advertise our message about the testing facilities, the testing hours, the vaccination centers, and vaccination hours. Don't get into the whole vaccination game, or the fight whether you want it or not want it, but as end of day, you do have the ability to utilize the funds for that.
Well, we have an agreement with the health department, and the hospital is coming out starting in November to do vaccinations.
There's your way that you can utilize that sign as your Harkla funds to be able to advertise that for vaccination, and that's a justified cause. Mr. Parker or Wheeler can give you the verbiage on it, and that may be able to streamline your ability to vote for your sign.
And, and we all remember, the building right behind us, DOT, has transferred that property in that building to us.
Yes, sir.
We currently have a grant application to make that satellite, health department slash vaccination center, rural health, something like that. We would like for the board commissioners, if you have the opportunity, to endorse that effort with us. I think the hospital's going to send us a letter.
And the health department's already sent.
And the health department is going to send a letter.
If you'll give us a template of the hospital's letter or the health department's letter, then I'll have staff, and I'll sign it, and send it to you. Also, I know you have questions for me, but I want to be sure, unless it's on my phone, for trade, I'll forgive it. LFI, it's time, we'll have our day allegation days, early December, December seventh, I want to say. But we'll definitely get that data to you, so y'all have always been very good, very, work very hard on your local funding initiatives for the state. So, definitely don't miss opportunity to come, at least presenting the case, that'd be a great local funding initiative for the state. So, utilize that opportunity as well. But I'll make sure, if you don't mind, you know when you get back, and I'll send you that.
And that's when we got the letter, got the call from Mr. Ganger's office.
Right. We desperately need our possum pals finished.
Okay, if you find one.
Phase two.
There's a firm title bringing plans. What's for it, I'm not sure. I almost said a thing.
You take up on the cares menu. Do we all know what the cares menu is? Yeah, so, CARE stands for something, normal virus, COVID, I don't know.
Central activation.
The other thing was our paving list. We, I believe it was Mr. Parker that may have told you, told Mr. Riley, and when Mr. Massey was here before, he indicated he might not know, and if you hear back from him, that's probably been three months ago now.
Paving list on the city of Wausau streets?
The paving that you're doing now. There's two streets, there's two streets that are county roads inside the city.
Yes, sir.
And they're not on that list. The road in front of my house, the city limit is lined, it's about this wide, and it's being paved.
Yes, sir.
We've got two streets here that's built to subdivision codes, to subdivision codes then, and they're not.
If they're not on this, they're not going to be on this. For some reason, they were, FEMA come out and sets the roads, y'all know how FEMA does. If you ever understand, if you ever tell me you understand FEMA, then we'll bankrupt you as well. I keep telling you what, give one of the criteria that they seem to fit for paving versus the one that didn't. I can argue that point throughout the entire county. There is hopes, and that's why we're working so hard with our contractors, we're putting out such small portions. I've asked our engineers to cut their prices, we're hopes, we entered a agreement with FEMA on the 428 project. That means the 428 project spends, they allot you a certain amount of money that you and them agree upon before construction, that they will pay for these roads to be paved. Any money that's over the county pays for it. Any money that's under, the county keeps but has to use it to mitigate future damages in roads. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, when the projects were put out, or the projects was validated and approved, gas was a dollar fifty a gallon, asphalt was seventy-five to eighty-four dollars a ton. Fast forward two thousand twenty-one, gas at three dollars and thirty cents a gallon, and asphalt's a hundred and forty dollars a ton. With that being said, we're giving you some very good pricing on our roads still. Our prices are down, so we're giving them small lots. They're seeing that the scope of work is conducive to building a road in a quick manner of time, and the contractor is really liking it. So, our prices are coming down with every project thus far, and I pray that continues. With that being said, with the four twenty-eight dollars left over, the county has discretion on the roads that we choose to pave because they're roads that we choose to mitigate, not FEMA choose to mitigate. So, that is the only hope, so that if they're not on the list, that we can mitigate these roads for a cheaper price advantage project through FEMA, through our county contractor. In two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, the road was probably going to fruition, and we finish it under budget where we could pay additional roads. So, can Mr. Massey give you an answer that the roads that's not on this are going to be paid? There's no one can give you that answer. So, I don't know what he told y'all that evening, or Mr. Parker.
I think we were asking, why were they not on the list?
Yeah, he can't have that question either.
Because, you know, the county does our great in all those roads, you know, through interlocal. And FEMA went out with Mr. Parker and all, and our roads, you know, it's been circled damage, Hagen Road is damaged, Coral Lane and Old Drive is damaged.
These two roads come off of roads that are being paved.
Yes, we had that against it throughout the county.
And these ones are through the county.
There's no one, there's no one in Wausau County can ask that question for you.
Would you, not commit, would you, would you try to remember at the end of the, at the end of the time, when you got that many left over that's discretionary, that we'd like to present our case for our roads?
Absolutely. What we do not want is a road rater traveling down a paved road degraded dirt road.
Hell, I.
That's awesome.
And I get it. So, with that being said, that is the highest criteria that we have. And can I commit to you that? I won't commit to.
Not, not.
But I will say that that is the highest criteria we have, we do not want a road rater traveling down a paved road degraded dirt road.
Not commit to the road, commit to the fact that you let us make an argument for our road.
Your argument's hurt, but you're definitely be hurt again, because.
See, these two roads, these two roads are so different, and actually, Mr. Parker lives on one of them. And he's got a, he's got a fairly good dirt road, the other one.
The other one.
The other one, and they're just like, quarter mile, they, it's in subdivision, and they're just running.
Does anybody know where Senior Road is in this county? The furthest road south of the county, that you cannot travel on the best aid most of the time because it will beat you to death. Hurricane Mike will come in on the east side of our county. Senior Road is the furthest road to the east side of our county. Why that road did not make the FEMA list is beyond me. So, when I said that I can't answer questions of why they are or why they're not there, because that is the prime example of FEMA at its finest.
In a heavily populated area.
It's highly traveled road. It's a forty-five minute deadhead for a road rater to get to Senior Road, forty-five, so. Again, I'm not making excuses for these roads, pick or leave them off the list. I just tell you that there's no justification for picking, leaving them off the list, because I don't have justification, and no one else does either. But I will, I will make that commitment to you that if we have forty-three million dollars left over, we will revisit any road that we possibly can to commit to where we don't have a road rater deadhead down a dirt road, down a paved road, degraded dirt road.
Anybody got questions on paving? Okay, code enforcement. The county does our plan, LDC, and code enforcement. Mr. Parker hit me with this one, because we've recently talked about it. We have, we have tried to, we have tried to get some code enforcement in the town. And we've actually sent properties, we've actually sent locations, and things like that.
And we have paid some of them, and we have paid some.
And we've had, and then there's a charge that comes back to us, and on that. But there should be a fine that's going to some of these people, and we'd like to get some of that back because this may have been before, partially before your time. At one time, Wausau, Vernon, Kirneville, and Ebro paid two thousand dollars a year to the county for you to be our planner and our code enforcement. If anybody else quit paying, before I retired, they quit paying. While we didn't pursue them, I was not administrative at that time, while that wasn't pursued out of note, but we kept.
They don't have a green, but we don't code enforcement.
We kept, but we kept on paying for our services.
And we do code enforcement, correct?
We kept on paying for services. Your last, I believe it was your last administrator before Mr. Massey.
Mr. David Corbin.
Mr. Corbin. Mr. Robert Trigg said one day, y'all don't have to pay us anymore. We're prepared today still to pay for our services, but we want the services when we pay for them.
No, no, I don't know, is, now, let me, let me understand, Mr. Riley, did you say we still are code enforcement?
We have interlocal agreement with y'all for code.
But, and we still hear some cases, we still do some cases, but you're not paying.
We pay for one, we had like nine hundred and seven dollars, you know.
Okay, so we pay you by case?
By case by case.
Okay.
On a matter of time.
And did that go, that must went four magistrate?
No, it didn't go four magistrate, they just, I don't know what happened really there. We got a bill.
I know that the code enforcement is.
We have, it's in the agreement though, that we make up, that we pay for.
Whatever cost.
Whatever cost.
Whatever cost, okay.
Nothing above that, but whatever cost the county.
Most of the time, the person comes into compliance, there's no fines or no penalties. But I will find out, for that case, if there is a fine or penalty, and you've paid for it, you've recovered costs, I completely agree that the fine penalty should go back to Wausau. But that is very few and far between when there's fine penalty. About eight months ago, we had a substantial amount of fines, penalties, and levies on property that there's no way, on homestead property, and Mr. Parker can attest this, homestead property, there's very little you can do. There's no code enforcement that has anything on homestead property. You put a lien, you put a fine, you assess fines, your property's content. But the ultimate goal of code enforcement is to take the blight of property and bring it back to compliance. The fine and penalties is incentive for them to bring the property back to compliance. So, eight months or a year ago, forgive me for not knowing the dates, we sent out a letter to every person that we had that had homestead property or a lien or fine or penalty against a property, and said, you have a hundred and twenty days to prove that you burned this property back into compliance, that you fix the codes. And if you do, all fines, liens, and penalties will be removed from your property. A substantial amount of people complied, and that's the ultimate goal of your code enforcement. The ultimate goal is not to assess fines or penalties, it's to make your neighbor, the neighbor that's living beside the blight of property where they are content with their property values, you're not going down, and it's neighborable. So, we try to stay out of the fine and penalty business, we try to work with the property owner, let them know that this is, you're not hurting only yourself, you're hurting your neighbor. So, with that being said, that was long-winded speech with this. If there is a fine or penalty assessment in Wausau, and you're paying by a case by case basis, I completely agree that we should come back to you. So, I will check on that case, and I will have Mr. Reddick reach out and you can call him next week. And Greg, please remember this, we've got one code enforcement officer for twenty-four, five, twenty-six thousand residents, so.
There's no reason I couldn't figure, why would you quit charging us if you?
I, again, you just asked me to figure out, think about it, and David will.
I'll bet on a fan.
And next you're going to ask for a lottery number, so chances aren't the same, but anyways, I love David Corbin. I know we're going to listen, take the call more. But anyways, that is, that is a question that I cannot answer for you, but I can have Greg, our code enforcement officer, reach out to Ms. Parker, and she can, she can tell her if there was any fine penalty assessed, and I have no problem at all making concessions to Wausau back for any penalties and fines assessed to Wausau. If you're paying, if you're making the county hold, it absolutely should.
And David, David probably thought he was because of during those lien budget years, so that's not criticism, it's just a now.
Fact.
Yeah. Maybe you and Mr. Carter jointly on the, it's still on code enforcement. I don't know how often the county has anybody come up and says, this place I'm giving nip to is a garbage dump and that kind of gap. We have it, we have it regularly, and then they come back next month and go, no, why we haven't done anything.
Well, you can tell you what you tell it. Now, in July this year, the former statute states if you want to file a complaint, you sign affidavit with your name on it to file a complaint. It's no longer anonymous. So, whenever they decide to file a complaint against their neighbor, it's not coming to you as the mayor, it is them coming to the code enforcement officer, fill out an affidavit with a signed official complaint with their name on it. So, tell them that you can carry the word on them, or they need to the county office and fill out a complaint.
I think, I think we understand that, I think you may have told us that, I think we understand that. The people, we the people, and they don't mind telling you, we'll remember you when it's time to boot. You've heard that one?
I will.
But, but wait, let me, let me initiate. If they come back the next month, they say, that's your ordinance, what are you doing to enforce your ordinance?
We do not.
It's not there, it's not there, I mean, they can do that. But is it their place to do that when we are the one that adopted the ordinance? If we have an ordinance, if it's biting dogs, or garbage on the ground, or I've been too fast, if we have an ordinance, aren't we the ones that's supposed to enforce our ordinances? We and the sheriff's office and whoever the.
There still has to be a complainant though, to have something to enforce. I mean, the ordinance exists, but it doesn't just enforce itself magically, so. That's the whole intent of the statute, is to get people on the hook.
When they come and complain to us, I think, I think he's interpreting the situation, the ordinance, the statute, to say that they have to complain to him and not to us. So, that's good, that's good.
No, 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 not me.
Well, they have to. They have to complain to the enforcement body, which in our case is the county because of our interlocal agreement.
Yeah, and they don't, they don't complain to the commission, I cannot file a complaint. Yeah. And, and they don't, they don't complain to the commission. I cannot file a complaint. Or I will file a complaint. I don't know if I could, I probably could, but that's their job as, as a citizen to take that burden on themselves and file that complaint.
Even if they're in the municipal limits.
That's still their requirement by Florida statute. And there's accountability for people. Uh, that if you have an issue, you don't see, you, how many times you see somebody citizen rest somebody for speed? Very few times. So they have those statutory obligations as that citizen, that they see that violation to report it. And then from there it's took through the code enforcement and then it's followed, there's, there's a letter law. There's, there's the code enforcement goes out, investigates if there's an issue, they, they summons the property owner, the property owner has a chance to bring it back into compliance. Don't enter compliance. Then moves to certain criteria, certain amount of days, it goes for the magistrate, magistrate and magistrate levies, fines, penalties and liens against the property. And as long as everybody's doing their part, it's a very good process. But.
I think we agree with you more than you can think that we are. We, we not, I don't care if somebody gets a fine or not.
Yes.
I would, I want the junk cleaned up.
That's exactly right. That's the end goal.
Uh, so if it's homesteaded, you put a lien against it, but you can't take that link.
You can't foreclose it. That's right.
You can't take that link until the property sales or the heirs do something or, or the, the homesteaders is gone.
Uh, I know one property that forced to be cleaned up and it was the city burden, I was the council president at the time and it wasn't homesteaded properly. The guy still brings up every time he sees me, but it had to be done. And that's our job as elected officials. Not enough, we don't always get to make the puppy, the puppy papers. We hear now that we gotta make decisions, it's tough and, and, but that's our job.
Reading the paper, she apparently has a very good track record. They're, they're, they're coming in positions of properties and they're doing, they're doing things. I don't know if we own more property here, but, but, uh, we're getting, you know how many people's come since you've been our attorney, three years now, four? Uh, you know how many people's come here and, and complained to us about having an ordinance? It has no teeth for having an ordinance that we're not enforcing. So, so where do we go from here?
With respect to code enforcement?
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, the, the mechanism is in place. I don't understand what, what is it that y'all would like to change? What's the question there?
Well, the one that we had to come out and, and cost us nine hundred dollars is not cleaned up still. I want it cleaned up.
I would like to know if there was a, if fines were levying against them?
No fines.
And they didn't bring it into compliance or they brought it into compliance and now it's just gone back out of compliance?
There was never any compliance.
When, how long ago was this?
Uh, it's been, it's been within this year, twenty-two, one.
Probably within the last year.
Yeah.
Although it's not.
Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's handle that issue by itself.
No.
And, and, uh, and reach out to me and I'll reach out to Greta and I'll have her sit down. It, it's maybe before Greta's time. Greta's been with me now.
No, it was not.
It was her?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
But I can, I can send you our invoice that we got and, and what was said in there, but it is, it's never been.
So it's never gonna go back into compliance?
No, sir.
Okay. Is it going, is it still going for the magistrate?
No. I, she closed it.
We don't.
Okay. Well, let's do this. Let's handle this, let's handle this in email.
Okay.
And, uh, send it to me and I'll sit down with Greta. I'll have, well, I'll have our affairs in that room.
The property's changed hands now and it's going to be cleaned up, you know?
Okay. So the property.
Has sold, yes.
Okay. So, okay. Well, let's, let's look at it. Let's figure out.
Yeah. If we figure out the answer, then the next thing that hasn't, so we'll know how to approach it.
Absolutely. And if there's been a fine or penalty levy.
And we do recognize staff pressures.
Well. You, you know, you've left it in fine, but you know, you, you, purpose is to collect them. You can let them all you want to. If they don't have money, you ain't gonna collect them.
The purpose is to have the property under. That ultimately is to have the property. Draw back and fight. But we'll handle this on a, and, and we'll find out if fines been collected first of all.
Okay.
And if there were to sell the transaction of property during the middle of it, I, I don't know all of the particular ones. So before I call them out or, or that, that, that can be a case by case.
Again, back to Mr. Carter, um, I know that the, that the law has many passive infractions. So is it different with code enforcement than it is with other things? Being calls that I had a speeding ticket and it was a hundred or two hundred dollars and I didn't pay it, they probably sent me one, put me in jail. We may can collect it, but they can do, they can collect that.
So, right, criminal statutes, yes, sir.
Yeah.
But we just believe that they just don't get priority because of homestead protection that Mr. Carter told you to in the constitution. There's nothing you do about it.
We got some of that homestead protection. Now we got folks who sell real property and things like that.
Well, that's, that's mostly our problem.
That's different. That's, that's.
Most of our stuff is.
Yeah.
You can acquire that property.
Yeah.
Huh?
You can acquire that property. That, that is a whole different matter.
Yeah. You can lien it and foreclose that lien and take it satisfied with it.
Well, that's probably a good idea on a lot of, of things in my.
Well, we, we may.
That's my opinion now.
We, we need to make sure that this is where we are because if we, if, if we try that one on, we better climb, climb a little bull, these eight seconds, we better make sure we.
Once you get that, once you get that ball rolling down the hill, everybody's stopping. But, but there he is, there he is, I, that, not homestead property is not what I included too. That is, that's a whole different matter.
Yep. And I just about each trial in some of these places, it's not homestead, see if we can do anything.
Yeah, that'd be good. I mean, that's where our problem is. It's the rim of the place that you're on.
And that, and that's how it works with y'all's. Uh, if we have any local agreement, you bring it to the county. If they file a complaint, that file's ours. You know, forces homestead property, we're inside city limits, so we're gonna come back y'all with ultimate judgment of it. But our magistrate, Mr. Carter is actually a part-time magistrate for us on a few cases. And so he can, uh, there, there, there's ways around the nonsense in property. Wave your teeth.
We just, we just need our campaign to for, to tell our size we have an order of the amount of losses and terrible condition repair and terrible condition, we just need, we just need a cleaning do.
Yeah, and it ain't that big.
All right.
Shouldn't be a big, big problem, but it is a problem.
Okay. All right. So I've got, uh, CARES Act, how you need code for it?
I got one more.
That's all, before you do, that's the least that I've made from our conversation is that, did I leave anything out that the, that the council?
Where we said that thus far, Wheeler's gonna contact you on CARES Act and Mr. Massey and Mr. Brunner's gonna contact Ms. Riley on the code enforcement and the paving is just to wait and see.
It's the same.
Yeah, that's what it is. Okay. All right. So where's our next?
Our rec monies. We certified our ball teams to the county.
Yeah.
But we have not got any funds.
All right. That's, that's easy enough. I can take care of that.
We're gonna have soccer too, so I can go ahead and certify the soccer too.
Okay. If you'll send that to me, if you'll send the money to me, I send that to Carter next, next time we cut the checks.
Okay.
That, that, that.
And that's, that's twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, that's twenty twenty-one money.
That's last year's money we had to.
Well, have, have we sent an invoice or anything?
No.
Okay. I, I.
We ain't got nothing.
No, no, no. What I'm saying, have y'all sent an invoice to us?
Yes.
Okay. Can't be anybody invoice this. And who, who'd you send it to?
I think I sent it to Wendy, but I'm not sure that I, who to send it to. So I think it's.
I, I'll send, I, I'll get you a, uh, better contact, Risha Bratley or John Pettis.
All right.
One would be probably the best to send it to the finance director.
All right.
Because Wendy gets inundated with emails and, and she very well may not know who sent that email to.
All right. Okay.
But, but we'll figure, figure out, make sure that this is streamlined, but, but that's as easy as a phone call to.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Could those sorts of things we have written down? Miss West, you have any technical, Mr. Hawkins?
No.
Mr. Crawford?
No.
No. Anything else from the administration?
No. I don't have any.
Mr. Hawkins, thank you for your patience and thank you for attending.
Oh, no, I, I don't mind. Good for all. Anytime that you.
You're still, you're still always welcome here.
Well, I'm, I'm.
We know that, we know that the last two years, the last just, tenth of October of eighteen has been a whirlwind for all of us. And then nineteen, we had COVID. Twenty, we had flu.
I would challenge, I, I would challenge anybody that's signed as many local state's emergencies I have. And I, I, I want somebody else to take the reins this next year so they can sign some local state's emergency. Maybe they'll just go away. I think we have about sixty right now, so, but, uh, but I do appreciate Walsall, always been a great partner, uh, to, to this, uh, county of Washington. And, uh, never feel just because I don't attend meetings like I, like I should, it's my fault, uh, that you cannot be the phone up and call me and get you, they give you same results by phone call, a person to me. So just always feel like they're good at cloud communication. Call me and we'll start what we're doing and figure out what we need to do to help you.
We, we do appreciate it. And, and let me just give you some unsolicited advice about those meetings. You can do it one every night, but somebody sent it home, are you out?
And, and, and I, and I realize that and I'm trying to do way better than that, but, uh, unfortunately, when I signed this, signed that online, I committed to y'all as well. So my wife, my children definitely understand that and, and I've got a great wife and a great family.
Yes, they do.
Really support you. So I appreciate it.
Is there anything you'd like to ask of us now? Anything you need from us?
No, sure. Uh, just be sure to get your good L and I five, you know, high tide boats, all boats. Uh, if y'all receiving estate funds, then better than Walsall, you're better than the county. Uh, if you have any questions about the ordinance, any ordinance that pertains to Washington County, one being in particular with alcohol orders, please don't, don't hesitate to read it. If you have questions and, and you reach out to your attorney, if your attorney has questions, that's what we're here for. We're here to make sure that we're all going to the same sheet of music and, uh, on the same path. So never feel like there's a question that's, that's not justified.
I, I speak for myself now and they can echo with you, have the same sentiment, but we do appreciate the relationship that we have with, with words. Uh, those two guys you got in our league and dad is doing a great job for you.
No doubt. No doubt. Guys, I do appreciate y'all, but if y'all have anything else to add, I don't know what it is, but I'm ready to talk to you.
All right. Thank you for ten. Please call me.
Did everybody use the first with the gift list?
Yeah.
Okay. All I need is a vote to concur the, uh, volunteer department, uh, chief for twenty twenty, twenty-one, who is, uh, stay the same, uh, chief Sam Rudd, assistant chief Adam Rudd, secretary of, Adam Smith. It's been, you know, hey, I've been here since several months, more than, uh, and Rebecca was the secretary of the legislature.
What's clear to the council?
We accept.
But a motion is our second.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, excuse the motion. Have it with the card.
Yes.
Card?
Yes.
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 Okay. This next item, the interview, uh, we're gonna set that for Tuesday to, uh, give y'all time to look over. We had a couple of late applications. If y'all will just look over those before Tuesday. And maybe we can set some interviews at that time, uh, for in the near future. Uh, we need to set the public hearing on the CDVG CB project for October twenty-sixth at five P M.
You need a motion for that?
Hmm. Sorry, I apologize. Public is a hindsight. Yes, they get one.
Okay. We need, we need a motion to have our, uh, our, uh, public hearing for the, uh, C D V G tiers.
CB is coronavirus, the coronavirus.
Right. Got a motion is our second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second, excuse the motion. Have it with the card.
Yes.
Yes.
Miss West?
Or?
Yeah, sure, but she is.
Okay. Y'all asked me to go out for quotes on, um, the Second Avenue and Monroe Street repairs. I, I reached out to, uh, three companies and we only have one estimate back, rather than the G three, which was twenty thousand something dollars. But y'all have a quote from Griffin's Construction for, to repair that cover and replace it and pay it over for eighty-six hundred dollars.
Okay. This is not doing anything in the intersection or any shade to itself.
No, just, just, y'all said just go out for that code.
Yeah. How does this compare to him just doing that, the, the, the other company just doing the, the?
The other company for that repair was twenty thousand dollars just for that.
You're a quarter?
Yes, intersection there. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so.
Oh, yeah. His whole thing looks.
Thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I remember. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, our, if I remember right, our roof fund is probably got ten thousand dollars in it?
Probably so, but if I, I think for infrastructure projects, Jeff will correctly find wrong, that we can use our Harper monies for those infrastructure projects, you know, some of our A D O P funds, you know, recovery.
Just talking about, let me come back to Harper. Right, like the signage or?
So we can use some of that money that we were going to transfer into street for.
And this is probably, it's not a result of Michael or anything like that, but it is a result of these recent.
Sally and.
Monsoon, yes, sir. Okay. Okay. All right. We got a quote from, uh, Travis Griffin Equipment Incorporated for, uh, is, is this includes paving now?
Yes, that, yeah, asphalt repaying.
For eighty-six hundred dollars. Everybody know the one we're talking about. Of course, we're Miss, uh.
Riget Thomas.
Riget Thomas, around that intersection there.
Come on down to the look at it. I know.
Yeah. That's the pleasure of the council.
I'll make a motion. We accept this deal from Griffin.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Have you voted towards now?
Yes.
Miss West?
Yes.
Card?
Yes.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Okay. When he said the employee workshop, since we've got a meeting next Tuesday and our meeting was, our workshop was set for the fourth of November. I talked with Roger and then he just, we agreed that we'd rather just meet one time and do the workshop and all.
Come back two weeks in a row?
Yeah. We done met fifteen times since October, September.
Okay.
So it's at five thirty P M.
Is, is, uh, now that's in, in corporation, which other two we just talked about? The interview and the, so does this have to be advertised or do, and do you need a motion?
We don't usually advertise our workshops because they're just.
That public hearing, that it is advertised.
It is advertised, yes, sir.
So you were just saying we'll do this, we don't have to accept a motion?
And this is the first time ever that we have worked very hard on records in the office and records that they wanted. But we got no findings on our D N P inspection report of our water system. We've never gotten that before.
That's great.
Jeff Massey's daughter was one of our inspectors.
Well, my goodness.
But we've never gotten no findings before, so.
That's great.
And the other, the other thing I have is if y'all have had a chance to look at the job description for the building firm, I'd like for y'all to vote to approve that job description for that, that position, women if you're on. Y'all have a notice very long. If you want to just look at it and we can approve it.
If we're gonna be in session, we should use the address.
Okay.
Wait. I had one. Anybody else had a chance to read it?
Not me, because it's just, uh, just fresh off the plate.
Uh, this is gonna be the reading good time. I was looking at, um, I was looking at the clerk's job description and the maintenance job description. These two positions were advertising for that assistance are much better detailed than all I yet.
We got that, the one from mine that y'all asked for, gonna be at the workshop.
Okay. I'd like to see us really go back and, oh, we're going to start over here because both of these people. And, and maybe we could just read it. We don't have a personnel policy, but maybe we could just.
Personnel policy.
Well, we, it, it needs to be revamped, but maybe we can just read into the minutes or maybe we need to adopt that. But I might say something before we say that, uh, that we have a policy that encourages promotion from within. That doesn't always mean that you're gonna get the job, but if we get a person that comes in working over two years and she retires and that person wants to have ten years, we replace her with somebody else, that person ought to have some kind of, uh, investment. If we keep them ten years and they ain't able to move into the next position, there's something wrong with that.
They're sitting down here ten years.
We don't need to keep them ten years. I want to have more percent of them if she did.
I know. I do too.
But, but what you think, dude? Can we just read that into the, that was, that's our policy and then sometime we didn't, we ended, need to incorporate it into our work.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's, let's think about that. Uh, I'm not gonna ask what and I, but just, just think about doing that. When we do it, this hiring policy.
And the trumper tree is, uh, the thirtieth from five to seven, the city will have a table out. We have, we're gonna actually decorate it this year.
On Saturday evening?
Yes, sir. Five to seven.
Okay.
Fall festival will be there. It was awesome last year, but soon you'll be giving out, handing out our tables so y'all at least come out and set out. We did, we did it the last two years.
Yep.
What now, yes?
Saturday night, five to seven, October thirtieth. And that's all I know.
You don't have just one more thing? A little book? Okay. Mr. Porter, anything?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Wassam?
No, sir.
Mr. Carter?
Where's the fire department that we're ready to move into?
Well, I got a story on that today.
All right.
We, uh, the state called, Miss Melissa with the state called, wanted to know why we did not have our, if we had our certificate of occupancy yet. So we do not. I called Washington County Building Department today and asked them why I had. Building Department today and asked them why had to not be issued, the, uh, C O, and they said it's because we do not have a nine-one-one address on the building, so we have called G D S and we're getting a sign put up that we're gonna have a, a nine-one-one address where we get a C O. Uh, we were supposed to do our bond issues tonight, there was something with, they haven't got the wording back from the federal office on that, hopefully they'll have it by the twenty-sixth, maybe, if not, it'll be the November meeting before we close on those bond issues, and Jeff's probably more familiar with that name, they're just dragging their feet around. But that's where we at, we just need a nine-one-one address, and then as soon as we close on those, the fire department are ready and have, on order their stuff, soon as we finish that stuff, we'll have our written cutting now.
Okay, I'm with you, do I kind of think her question is that, that gets the C O, but that's still a moving part of it, that's what I'm...
Has the floors not been finished, everything inside been finished?
We have no furnishings yet.
For the floors and...
Yeah.
Air conditioning, all that's been finished?
Awesome over there.
Have we got our, have we got our, uh, what is it, our...
No, our interman and security notice not there yet, we're, uh, the I P techs come out Sunday and looked at the buildings to see how to, we've been pouring it all over there yet.
Okay, will we open before the end of the year?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, anything else?
No.
That was it? Okay, uh, I think you answered, is the lights on after dark ready to go, and you said we're getting...
We're getting electricians, we'll have ready to go.
Okay, legislative funding initiatives, we talked about that last, uh, month, has anybody come up with anything that we need to present to?
I remember...
Senator, Senator Gainer, or that's what, Mr., we're talking about, I do, okay, and it's so late to get into, but the progress on those things that I asked about last month?
Yeah, they're here.
There's a ten, there's about ten of them in these minutes, and are they still all undone?
I haven't heard anything in the county on that E O C D.
The Gulf Three is at the center here.
Gulf Three is at the center.
Always wanting to...
And the following internet, the fire department is, is all open. And... What's this, sign going over, oh, this...
Uh, status of sign, before we go, have a...
That's for you, Jack?
Pretty here, I think.
I'm sweating, so...
That feels good to me.
Fall festival, you already have a minute.
Yes, yes, if you will review them, because you're...
I'll give you a, uh...
You're going to have to be the one to answer.
I'll be with that on Tuesday.
You should be fine. Do y'all know, I just asked her, remember last month I asked her a bunch of things and she, uh, they're in your minutes?
Just the signs that's on the road?
Well, sand, pictures on the wall, letters, code enforcement, what we did, if you told Mr. Carter what we did about the code enforcement, I think you felt like you couldn't write those letters or something, we asked you to about three, four months ago?
Yes, sir.[1637.44]